Okay, well, I'm running again because I have some issues on the council that I want to see completed. Part of it is the downtown area and also to get people down here. The idea of moving to the east side to do some revitalization over there. We're desperately in need of revitalization help. The buildings we have mostly vacant and they're deteriorating. You know, empty buildings deteriorate three times faster than an occupied one. Purchasing will be too expensive for us to move in. And I enjoy working with the people in the district. You know, I enjoy getting phone calls from them and able to give them assistance if I can help them out and solve their problem for them. That's valuable to me. Makes the job worthwhile. Plus, you know, I like the galvanities of it. Going through the law books when issues come up. If I don't find understanding, I'll look it up in the law book. Or if he's available, discuss it with the city attorney. But I hope to get re-elected.
How long have we been on for the record?
This has been a 16th year.
Okay. Uh, Leslie, Cecil only used two minutes, so you've got an extra minute.
No, just kidding.
Well, I'm running because I grew up in Birmerton. I'm a, my dad's a retired Navy and he settled down in the Birmerton area. And I remember growing up and playing on the Wheaton Way corridor and a thriving area of businesses. And I remember one time when I was growing up, there was a parade on the Warren Avenue, on the Wheaton Way corridor, and that was really neat. And I would drive around my neighborhoods and I see kids and families and I'm part of those neighborhoods. And I just want to bring a fresh approach to council and revitalize the Wheaton Way corridor. I want to represent our neighborhoods, our families, our kids. I want to see all the things that they're doing to the downtown area on the other side of the bridge as well. I want the revitalization to continue. And I just, you know, I'm a, my kids went to Birmerton School District. I'm born and raised here. All our kids were raised in and born in Harrison Hospital. And so this is my city and I want to run because I want to represent my city. I want to represent the voters and the people I'm door-belling to. And I think I can be their voice.
I'm Ron Kernan.
Hi. This is Steve Gardner, for those of you who are not knowing. And he's a reporter, he's not a member of our reporter board, but he will sit in on this and he can ask questions to the associations. And, but when we start delivering before it'll be.
Get out of the room.
Okay. I'm Ron Kernan, born and raised here in Birmerton. Went to East High School, graduated from there in 1971. Tended Olympic College for about a year and a half and then due to some circumstances, left college and went working full-time. Worked for Peninsula Truck Line for about six years and in '79 I got hired by the government fire department. Been with government fire department for 31 years, retired last year in 2010. The last 15 years of my tenure there, I was a training officer, safety officer for the fire department. So had a lot of experience in the public safety aspect of how the city operates and those types of things. I've been married for over 30 years. Have a daughter that's 31 now and she works in the shipyard, lives in East Birmerton. So I have a lot of interest in wanting to do the right thing for Birmerton. That's one of the things I tried to do when I was with the fire department was always kind of weighing balance whether or not what we wanted to do was the right thing for the citizens of Birmerton. The, part of my interest, I think, in running is much like the other two candidates really, is trying to get more business to go outside of the downtown. I'd love to see more business come to the downtown core to begin with. That's part of the problem that we're having with the boardwalk area right now is that we put in a lot of public money to develop that and everything with the hopes that private money was going to come. And we haven't seen a lot of that private money yet to really kick things off to get the businesses going. But that said, it's also good for Birmerton if we can get small businesses going to the Kitzapway corridors or Wheaton Way corridors and Manette area. So what's good for Birmerton overall is really good for District 2. So that's a lot of my concerns and I think the other two candidates also, is trying to get that business back to Birmerton.
Okay. All three of you have mentioned getting more revitalizing, if you will, the Wheaton Way corridor. I'd like each of you to tell me specifically how you would propose encouraging that and start off with Ron this time.
You know, I wish I had crystal ball. I've looked at a lot of different cities around us, Orchard, Paulsville, and I see so many different small businesses there that aren't in Birmerton. And I just wonder why they're able to get those businesses there and we're not able to get them here in Birmerton. So I think one of the things that I would like to do is try to propose some sort of, I'm not a real big fan of committees, but like to put together some sort of committee of business owners, property managers, and a few people from the city staff to try to look at how to get business back to Birmerton.
To you, Leslie.
Well, the one thing I know for a fact is there is a beautiful Wheaton Way plan that the city of Birmerton has already done. So there's step one, the plans are already made. It's beautiful and it's continuation of the downtown area so that when you connect them, they're joined together. And then the other thing is, is I've talked to our state reps and our state congressmen. And since it is a state highway, they have informed me that there's state money available because it is a state highway. So it's just a matter of talking to them and seeing what we need to do to get the money brought back into the area.
Okay, one of the problems we had with Wheaton Way corridor over there was the master leaseholder that's kind of forbid other businesses going in. We lost Eagles because they weren't allowed to expand. We lost Lowe's for the same reason, because of the leaseholder. There probably is not a whole lot of hope there until, I think it expires in two years, their lease from the Barrett Company. But as far as getting business in here, I think one way would be to approach it the same way you would if you're looking for high caliber directors or something like that. And get a headhunter type to go out and talk to businesses and try and lure them in. Sitting here and just waiting for them to approach us has not worked and it will not work. You have to go out and give a business some reason for coming into the city. And over there, I think is an ideal location to get businesses in there that pay more than the minimum wage. There's a lot of room over there. And some of the plans that we did have, the person up at the north end, I think they run belly up, one broke. A real nice plan, you know, for businesses, residents and stuff like that, mixed use. But it didn't go anywhere. But I think we have to make an active approach to businesses to get them into the city.
Okay, Leslie, you can go first on this thing. How do you feel about cities using red light cameras? Should it be continued? Has it been successful? Is it a good idea?
As far as the red light cameras go, I particularly am not in favor of it because the reason why I'm not in favor of them is it's revenue being used instead of our police officers. And if that's revenue that we're using to bring in towards the city, then shame on us for doing that instead of using and revitalizing our police department as what they are. When we bring in the red light cameras, then we are eliminating jobs, working jobs for our police officers.
Well, we can't have police officers on every corner, but as far as my opinion of the red light camera, I favor them, but I don't particularly like the amount that the fine is. It was made into a revenue generator instead of a traffic controller. It has reduced accidents, it has reduced serious accidents considerably. But I think the $124 fine is a bit much on that. But it wouldn't hurt me to see them go away. Although I do appreciate the safety factor of having them there. But we can't have a cop on every street corner, you know, that we don't have Seattle or New York police force. We have five people on shifts and they're busy with a lot of other things.
So you're just to nail it down a little bit. You've kind of talked to both sides on this. You talked about, you know, reducing accidents, but you're not real fond of some other aspects. So it was thumbs up or thumbs down?
I think, well, thumbs up on it, but I think on the right turn, I think they're a little tight in flashing cars that make the right turn. You know, I myself, I pull up to an intersection, I'm going to make a right turn, I look down there, there's another car within a half a mile. I do not come to a full stop all the time, except when I know there's a red light there, camera, then I do. But I think you're a little bit tight on that. But as far as people speeding up to beat a yellow light and getting caught, no. Because speeding up hard, if you hit somebody, so I got on the Kitzapway. I stopped for the red light, the car behind me didn't. $1,600.
Well, as a prior safety officer, I looked at them and say, I'm thumbs up on them because one of my concerns that I've always had when I was with the fire department, I was the driver trainer for 20 years for the fire department. And one of my biggest fears was the fact that with people getting so used to just making that automatic right-hand turn, that our firefighters, as they go through the intersection with red lights and sirens going, that those people might not hear them and they're just going to just automatically cruise through there. And that's usually where we have most of our accidents with our emergency vehicles. So I was really in favor of them when they finally got here. I do understand that there's people that have concerns with them as being more of a revenue sort tool. But I think if they're used right, that they do serve a purpose. I think I've seen that purpose served here in Birmerton. I also know that the police department is very careful in how they manage those red light cameras. When we had the Arnold's Furniture Fire, the fire department attempted to try to get access to those red lights to see if they could see anything there that had occurred prior to the fire starting. And the police department wouldn't let them have access to it. So they do control that. So I'm, as, like I said, I'm a fan of them right now.
Do you have any thoughts about Birmerton, right, so you have any questions?
No, but I did share the concerns about revitalizing the East Birmerton area. I worked over there for a long time and there seemed to be deteriorations. That's been a real dilemma.
Yeah, the law would be different if we had six council members over there instead of just three.
Well, one of the things that did occur to me when you're talking about that, and I know there's no easy answer, but discussing what could be done and how, gee, this is a real problem. The problem, of course, is with the general economic problems. It's not just advertising or reaching out. What kind of thoughts do you have about going beyond? How would you suggest going beyond the economic problems? Making up for that in a way, to reach out to people so they will come here versus someplace else? When there's not many people, many companies expanding in the first place? Is that, you know, go a little further with that, I guess, is what I'm asking. Go ahead. Well, my feeling regarding the Wheaton Way corridor is, in order to make it work and make it happen, is you've got to work in unison with your county. You've got to work in unison with your county, your state workers. And you've got to be working in unison with your voters. And so talking to the business owners and seeing what they see as a big issue, what their flaws are or what the city's flaws. Maybe some incentive programs with our BNO tax. I know the BNO tax is a big deterrent as far as our businesses go. But there's potential because there's, one, it's on a bus line. Two, we've got the Boys and Girls Club coming in, which is going to hopefully help in that revitalization. So when you see a Boys and Girls Club and you have a bus line accessible, it gives it easy access to various citizens. And then hopefully with the citizens and the businesses as well. But I think you have to work in unison with everyone.
I learned a long time ago that I don't have all the answers. And so much like what Leslie said, you do have to reach out and look for people that may have some of those answers for you. How do you go about doing that? Public forums. I think there's a lot of strong business people out here in Birmerton that have that ability and that know how to go about having access to some of those larger companies out there. I know that we also have some people out here right now that are trying to do that on their own. And I think that if we could partner with them, partner with the county, partner with the poor Birmerton, we're much better being good partners with each other and trying to make things happen here for the better of all of us, rather than just trying to be isolated and do it just for one group. So I'm in favor of trying to partner with some of these other groups out there, such as the county and port and seeing where we can go with it.
Well, one of the first things I would do if I had the authority would eliminate the BNO tax because to these big companies, that's a lot of money. And it always grabbed me when I had my business because it paid on the gross, not on your net. It pays on the gross. So you're paying taxes on the same money over and over and over again.
Whether you're making money or losing money.
Right. Until your investment, that you started a business worth its time. And I agree with the other two people here that you have to reach out. We have to make Birmerton business-friendly. And one thing against it is our parking situation. We have a terrible parking situation that if businesses come downtown, their customers have no place to park. And if they happen to have, you know, like a restaurant, a lot of people spend two hours or more in a restaurant if they have a large group and a reunion type thing. And they all get tickets when they come out, to get back in their cars.
It's one advantage you have on the east side is the parking use.
Yeah, but it's a major problem. But I don't think we could just sit back and expect businesses to seek us out. We have to go look at them. And the businesses that we do have in Birmerton would be the best place to start, I guess you mentioned, because they've been through the mill, they know why they're here and they know why some other company might want to come in. But I think one of our major blocks is the BNO taxes. That's an onerous tax. It's bad enough to have to pay the state without having to pay the city too.
Then the BNO tax.
That's true.
Jim, if I could address that BNO issue. Lowe's, you mentioned Lowe's, they left because of the leaseholder issue. They wanted to expand, they wanted to stay. Did the BNO tax have any?
It might have had a little bit with it, but what they wanted to do was expand back into the timbered area and get rid of those three little buildings over there on the corner to create more parking. And the leaseholder would not allow them to do that.
The leaseholder being of the buildings?
No, of the whole area.
Of the whole area, okay.
The master leaseholder of the entire area.
Okay.
But on the BNO tax, as far as that goes, you'll notice a lot of our businesses are just on the outskirts of our city limits. And a lot of it has to do with the BNO tax because they're making, if you're a small business and you make $60,000 or less, then you don't have to pay that BNO tax. So great for you, but if you're a big business, then, and the more you bring in, the more BNO tax you pay.
So I guess the question I would have then is if, you know, you guys have been trying to lower it piece at a time. If you think you cut it off, I mean, what would it take to actually eliminate the BNO tax? What do you think, I mean, what would have to happen for Birmerton to be able to do that?
Substitute revenue source.
You'd have to find another.
Which if you've got businesses, the sales taxes would compensate, help compensate for that.
Because I think BNO tax right now pulls in about 2.6 million.
Yeah, brings in about 3 million a year. And before you can eliminate the BNO tax, you need to figure out another revenue source. A lot of talk is about annexing that part of where Lowe's and Fred Meyer's is and then hopefully annexing that part into the city and then getting the revenue from that. Yeah, it's a 3 million chunk of our revenue.
Okay, okay, and so to follow up on that, so, I don't know if you guys have studied, and this is probably getting way too far into the details, but I don't know what kind of resistance Fred Meyer and Lowe's would have now of being annexed by Birmerton. But if their sticking point was BNO?
No.
Oh, am I not supposed to be here?
No, not yet.
Oh, they just pointed me in here and I'm sorry, Jim. Okay. Did I miss something? I'll wait outside.
Just go forward to 445.
Right, it's like 5, 10 minutes and I'm really sorry about that, guys.
I guess, you know, another one is if Lowe's and Fred Meyer and all of these stores, Walmart, like you were saying, whispering over there, Safeway, all of them said, hey, look, we'll stop our resistance if you guys get rid of the BNO tax. Do you think there's enough revenue there that you could do it?
Sales tax, yeah.
Is there?
With Safeway, with Walgreens, with Walmart, with Fred Meyer, with Lowe's and all the other small businesses, there's definitely revenue there.
So would you guys favor being aggressive about that?
As far as eliminating the BNO tax?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is would you be aggressive about going after those stores, annexing that far in order to get them, to get their revenue and to eliminate the BNO tax for everybody else?
Yes. I mean, if that's what it's going to take to bring the businesses in and revitalize the Wheaton Way area, then it takes aggressiveness and it takes someone with passion and energy. And maybe it's going to take a lot of work. It's not going to be an easy, easy thing. So it's going to be definitely a lot of work.
Were you going to weigh in on that?
Well, it takes.
Is it realistic, I guess, to go after them on that promise?
Well, yeah, it's in our agenda future, but yeah. When Lowe's left, we lost over $40 million. And they're a lot bigger now than they were when they were inside the city limits.
Does that combine BNO and sales tax?
Yeah, but they're between 3/4 and a billion dollars now that the tax might pay somewhere because they really increased since they've been out there. And of course Walmart is huge.
My other question is, what are you guys' thoughts on council reduction? I don't know who's going first, Jim. Sorry, I shouldn't. Go ahead, Ron.
I think, just to weigh in on the BNO a little bit. When Lowe's left, we sent Don Pratt, who was the director of community development at that time, out to Lowe's. And he had several meetings with them because everybody was really concerned that it was all about the BNO tax. And they assured him that it wasn't about the BNO tax. It was just as Councilman McConnell said, it was about their ability to expand. And that was the unfortunate side of it. But now you look at the BNO tax and nobody has ever really been really in favor of BNO taxes. But that said, a lot of cities still do have them. It is a source of revenue, but we do have to figure out a way to balance that, I think. And I think Birmerton did take good step here probably 10, 15 years ago in starting to lower that BNO tax. And so now you see advertisement on TV with the car dealers saying that their overhead is lower than Pearson King County. And that's a large part of why, because Birmerton did lower the BNO tax for them. So I think there's room, there's still room to do some more on that. But we have to weigh and balance the annexation part of that with the amount of services that we have to provide and what that part of it's going to cost us. And so, you know, it's one of these things that we really have to be careful about just not rushing out and doing right now. I'd much rather see us make sure that we provide a safe and secure place for the citizens that are already here in Birmerton. And then as the economics gets better, to look at moving out to those different areas that we can go to and make a difference out there then too. And I'm sorry I got off on that, but.
No, you hadn't had a chance to answer before, so you're fine.
Okay. So the other question was.
Council reduction.
Council reduction, I'm in favor of it. I remember that when we first started this form of government, I was riding up in the elevator with several of the people that were just getting ready to be on the council and asked them, why are we at nine? And they said, well, that's because that's what Seattle has. We want to be like Seattle. Oh, we're not a Seattle. And it does make it more difficult when you're trying to get five votes to get something done here in Birmerton. And so I would like to see us reduce it down to seven.
As far as that, the one thing I can honestly say about it is that it's going to vote, it's in the ballots, it's in the citizens' hands. And whatever the citizens decide, then that's where I'm going to go with. As far as am I for it or against it, I'm kind of impartial because I see benefits of both of it. The benefit is the revenue of $26,000 a year. About 24, but with expenses, business expenses and stuff like that, so I said 26. And then I see that as revenue, but I also see a city, a county that's being redistrict. And does that mean we're going to be spread out too thin? I'm not sure. But the advantage is, is that it is at the ballots and we'll see what the citizens have to say.
Pretty much the same, I'd made it to a citizen issue, it's their charter, it's their city. My only concern is the reduced representation that they would have. Right now, we have, you know, about 1,200 or so households in each district. And with reducing to them, you pick up another 200 or 300. And it might push a council member a little bit much, you know, concern himself with all the issues that are, and a lot of issues do come up with neighborhoods. It's amazing. Fewer now than it was when I first got on the council. But there's still good issues. I got one guy in my district that's out collecting signatures on a petition to the city now. But if the people won't settle, that's fine with me.
You said somebody's out collecting signatures now? You said somebody's out collecting signatures now?
Yeah, for a petition for speed hubs on their street, which is another issue. I don't think I'm in favor of speed hubs. That was the firing pitch.
I would like each of you to give your best shot on why voters should pick you instead of those other two folks you're running against, you know, what? Who do you think you might bring to the council, or, you know, continue having on the council, you know, with constraints? You know, basically, why you instead of one of the other two?
The reason why I feel I should be elected for city council is I'm going to bring a fresh new approach to city council. I have, I've come to council with a lot of various experience. I'm currently working with Birmerton School District, so that is a plus on my side as far as knowing some of the things with the Boys and Girls Club, because I've already got some stuff on that one. But I have been a treasurer on many councils, I have been on many executive boards as far as on councils as well, and so I have financial experience, I have council experience, I have the energy, the drive, and the passion. I love my city, I want to continue to see our city grow and get revitalized. As I start doorbelling and talking to our citizens in District Two, I'm realizing that I want to be their voice and listening to their stories and telling me what their issues are. I want to be able to represent them. I want to be, I want to be their person to go to when they have issues, when they have problems, and hopefully represented at city council as well.
Well, that's a hard one, to be the answer, because I don't know either one of these two people. I'm assuming that they would do a good job electing. I have been more or less a financial watchdog on the council, successful sometimes and not other times, but I feel I've represented the people quite well. I've answered all of their concerns, I've answered every phone call that I've gotten. Most of the time, I don't, if I'm not there and get a phone call, I don't call them back, I usually go to their residence, because if they have a problem with their streets or something, I go there to see what it is, instead of just calling up and asking them what's going on. But I think I've done a pretty good job on the council and would like to continue for two or four, depending on whatever the people think about the reduction thing.
Well, from my viewpoint, I thank Councilman McConnell for all of his years of service. I think he's done a great job for us. It's a hard job, and it does take a lot of effort, and I know that he's put that effort into it. Part of my concerns, I guess, is where we're going to be at for the next couple of years. We continue to see the revenue sources going down. I know we've got some foreclosures in our neighborhoods right now, and those are starting to sell, fortunately, but what they're selling for is probably about half the price of what we feel our houses are worth. So I don't know where that's going to drive us in the next couple of years as far as property values. My fear is that that's going to drive those revenues down, and when those revenues go down, the city has to make some real hard decisions based on, you know, budgets and things like that. So that's where I think I can help educate the council to some degree as far as what really goes on inside some of these different departments. I've been in there for 31 years, I know what the street department person does from the inside, I worked with the facilities people on a daily basis when I was there, so I know what they do. And so I think part of my strong points, I think, is that ability to work with council and educate them on what is really going on on the operational side of the city. And then hopefully we can make some good choices as far as what we have to do in order to balance that budget, because I'm fearful that our budgets are going to be, continue going down in the next couple of years.
Quick question for the two challengers. The last year, how many council meetings have you attended?
Since I've put myself out for the running, I have been to every study session, I've been to every city council meeting, I have been to some committee meetings, not all of them, so I have been to every one since I announced my candidacy.
Which was when?
June, the second week of June, which was the first day Monday.
For this year, I've only been to a couple of council meetings, and I've gone to several safety committee meetings and some of the RFA committees.
Very good, we're out of time, our comments cease, so we'll get out of here in time, so watch me, so at least two of you will probably be going to the study sessions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.